All right, I call to order a meeting of the North Andover School Committee, January 29th, 2015, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to just remind people that the meeting is being recorded, so if you have a cellphone, if you could silence it, that would be great. We're going to open up with public comment for agenda items only. All right, so we will move on to recognition. Dr. Scuzzarella, Mr. Young?
Thank you, I think I was just here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to recognize some outstanding performances by some individual fall athletes as well as teams. And I have the Assistant Principal for Athletics and Activities with me tonight, Scott Young, who's going to give you the rundown on the fall seasons and recognize the students.
Thanks. The fall at North Andover was really one for the record books. Our teams finished with an overall record of 95, 41, and 5. It's a 68 percent winning percentage. We crowned two North Championship teams, three North runners-up, and one other team reached the North Semis. 476 student athletes participated in the programs this fall, representing 35 percent of our body, student body. Just going to take a quick opportunity to thank all the coaches and parents. I think we sometimes forget how much time they put into this that we don't always see. And I want to thank Pat Gagni, the Administrative Assistant, who really makes everything happen. All our teams did really well. We're going to start with quick recognition of our cheerleaders. The varsity cheerleading was once again led by Coach Sherry Blaze, and captains Maggie Boyle, Molly McLean, Gabby Marani, Olivia Robinson, and Amanda Cunningham. They had a great competition season, finishing first in three Invitationals, second in the MVC, and first at D2 North Regionals. The team was really successful. They frequently beat much bigger schools. We have some certificates to recognize some of these girls.
Did you hear the CV?
Yeah. So, we recognize Molly McLean for being a captain of the D2 North Champions. Maggie Boyle for being a captain, Gabby Marani, and Olivia Robinson. Boys cross ... Oh, we failed to mention Amanda Cunningham also. Boys cross-country team had a great fall, finishing 6-4 in the regular season, fourth at the divisional meet, and they qualified for the All-State meet. The team was led by Rick Delakai, and he's the head coach, and captains Chris Lloyd, Zach Freilich, and Mark Marin. Tonight, we're going to honor Zach Freilich and Martin Conrad for being All-Conference. The girls' cross-country team was also led by Coach Delakai. They finished their regular season at 4-6. The captain was Laura Delakai, and the team received the MVC Sportsmanship Award. Laura is not, is she here? Not here tonight, but she would receive our Sportsmanship Award for us. Field hockey team had an unbelievable fall. They finished at 13-3-3, ultimately losing in the D1 North Semis. Head coach Courtney Breen and captain Sarah Balliger, Sabrina Coppa and Jackie Pedo led the team to the semifinals. They had a lot of honorees, All-Conference honorees, Sabrina Coppa, Danielle McAdam, Emma Johns. Sabrina Coppa was also elected to the Mass Field Hockey Coaches Association Best of 60 All-Star Team, and Emma Johns was named an Eagle Tribune All-Star. So we have certificates for those girls. They had a fabulous fall, finishing the season at 8-4. They were crowned the D2 North Champions. Coach Rafferty was named MVC Coach of the Year. Captains Robert Schlaugh, Bubba Luke Hitchcock, James Foote, Brayden Nichols, and Jake Burkhardt led the team on a magical ride through the playoffs before falling to eventual state champion Marshfield. The conference honored Bubba Schlaugh, Yanni Filaris, and Joe Samuelman as All-Conference. And they also named the Coach of the Year, John Rafferty. He has retired, but to a person, you can't find someone that won't say what a great job he's done with our kids, whether it be a fellow coach, an official, kids, they all talk about how he builds the whole person and has done a great job. So, he's not here, but we should thank him anyway. The golf team, once again, proved to be the class of the league. They finished 14-1, MVC Champions again. It's three in a row, I believe. The team also finished second in D2 North Sectionals. Coach Peter Farley and captain Jack Kelly did a great job leading this young team that didn't contain any seniors, so the expectations are pretty high. Tonight, we're going to honor All-Conference Sam Karen Jack McKay, MVC Player of the Year Jack Kelly, he was also an Eagle Tribune All-Star, and MVC Coach of the Year Peter Farley. Boy soccer, led by head coach Kyle Wood guided his team to an 11-8 record. They lost in the first round of the MIA tournament. Captains Paul Demeo and Miles Commusion did a great job leading this youthful team this year. The team finished second in the league, just one point out of the championship, and played with class and style all year long. We recognize tonight All-Conference Rory Martin, Paul Demeo, and Miles Commusion. Coach Lisa Razanen guided this team to the North Finals and the MVC Championship. Captains for the team are Mara Barry, Leah Chitik, Michaela Guthrie, and Stephanie Stabile. They finished the season with a 16-3-2 record before they fell to Conca Carlisle in the North Finals. Lots of honorees. All-Conference Michaela Guthrie, Abby Corrales, Leah Chitik. First-team Eastern Mass All-Star, Michaela Guthrie. Second-team Eastern Mass All-Star, Abby Corrales. All-State, Michaela Guthrie. Eagle Tribune and MVC Coach of the Year, Lisa Razanen. Captains Emily Carwell, Emily Fox, Rachel Porton, and Rachel Sams led the team to a 2-8 record and a fantastic second-place finish at MVC Championships. Head coach Aaron Command had done a great job in doubling the size of the team and creating a competitive atmosphere for the girls. Lauren Dontramont was a sectional champion, and Sidney Sow broke her own school record in the 100 backstroke this season. Tonight, we recognize Sidney Sow and Lauren Dontramont as All-Conference, as well as Lauren was our first-ever, I think, MIA Student Athlete of the Month for November. So Sidney and Lauren. So volleyball had a historic fall for our program. Coach Veronica Shafer guided our team to the North Finals, a 17-4 record, which was good for second place in the MVC. Captains Rachel Kopinski, Sabrina Freilich, and Catherine Flaherty set the tone for this team to achieve greatness on the court and in the classroom. You might have seen an article in the Tribune about their academics as well. Catherine Flaherty, Julian Boyle, and Rachel Kopinski were all named All-Conference.
So, I would just like to take a quick moment and just thank all of our student athletes. It's always a privilege to read the Eagle Tribune and see how well you guys are doing and how well you represent North Andover. We're very proud of you, and thank you for doing that as well as you do. So, thank you. So, do you want to get a picture?
I already got one.
You go in, okay. All right, so I know a lot of the students want to get home and shovel or something, so, thank you. in 10A, we have the first reading of the DECA overnight trip to Orlando, because Dr. Scuzzarella is here. I don't know if there are questions or any information that she may be able to provide for us, because our next meeting is not until...
February sometime.
February 25th or something like that, so, okay.
Thank you for taking me out of order. This is for Nationals. I anticipate with 73 students going to states, that we will have at least five or six qualify for Nationals, perhaps more, perhaps the most we've ever sent. So, I'm asking ahead of time for permission for them to go. It's in Orlando. It is on the Disney property at the Hilton Hotel is where the Massachusetts students are headquartered. And I did already make the call to make sure about security and be able to give you that answer. They did assure me that because it was, each hotel is designated to a different state for the most part, and that hotel happens to hold 500, so it'll be 500 kids from Massachusetts. They will have security on every floor, every night, paying attention to the kids. They'll be transported via shuttle bus from there to the convention center, which is where the conference and the competition actually is. And then there are activities planned as a group. DECA has an evening at each of the Disney parks, I believe, and some other activities for them to participate in while they're there. It's about $500. The school will pay the registration fee for the conference, and the kids have fundraised with this in mind, and they will continue to fundraise once they get through states and see who qualifies.
So, I guess my first quick question is, you won't know the results of how many are going until the competition, which I think is the end of March?
It's in Mar, I want to say the second weekend in March, 11, 12, 13, something like that, so I won't have a number of how many students. We have to have one chaperone for every eight, so for right now, one chaperone is slotted to go, and if we need to send more than eight students, we'll have a second chaperone go. There'll be no shortage of chaperones to go on that trip. No, not April, not Orlando, they'll be on board.
So, you're okay with us voting on this at the end of the month?
Yes, it's not an emergency or anything. I just wanted to be sure it was approved prior to March, so that they can be fundraising and things like that.
Yeah, we just have a long span, so I wanted to make sure. If you had to do flights or something...
Yes, they're going to put a deposit on X amount of flights, just so that they have them booked.
Okay, all right.
You touched on the topics that I'm usually asking about, so thank you in advance.
I'm starting to anticipate now.
Any other questions?
No, but before Dr. Scuzzarella goes, can I just ask her a quick question about the program of studies, so she can leave then? Are the new business things?
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to ask you, what should we, the school committee, be thinking when we look at the program of studies? What should be our takeaway from that, other than it's comprehensive, has lots of good stuff, you know, students ought to be pleased?
There really isn't, I mean, other than making some typographical corrections or changes to the wording, there isn't really anything in there that would be of concern.
No, no, just...
Nothing new. There's a number change, and really, we just cleaned up and streamlined. We did take some courses out, some that we haven't run for a couple of years. We just took out of the program of studies, so that we wouldn't have five children sign up for it, and then we don't run it. So, we've been paying attention the last couple of years as to what kids have signed up for and what they haven't. So, that's really why I get it over to you, to just have a purview and see where we're heading for next year.
That looks great, and I mean, there's a lot of support information in there for students about different things. That's good, okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much. I'm going over to gymnastics.
There you go.
Then drive carefully.
Nicole is tonight, baby, that's my new job.
So, we'll move on to the student report, Nick. You lost your fans. You lost your fans.
I did. That's all right. I would like to thank you guys for recognizing me, again, allowing me to speak, and as Dr. Scuzzarella just said, Nicole wanted me to apologize that she couldn't make it. It's actually their senior night tonight for their gymnastics meet. I hope you guys had a good two days off, filled with shoveling and snow blowing your driveways. I know I did, and most of North Andover High did. I just wanted to start off, actually, with the snow days. I know a lot of people complained how other schools like Methuen Andover and them had today off, but in my perspective, I don't know if it really matters, but I actually thought it was a good call. I thought the streets are fine. My mom was actually fine with me driving, which was a big surprise, because she's usually overprotective, so I thought it was a good call to have school. Even as a senior, I don't have to make up snow days, but I thought it was a good call. All my sidewalks were clear, so... Yeah. Let's see. We're winding down, we just finished the halfway point through the trimester. I know our next meeting, I overheard, is February 25th, so that will be towards the end of it. Yeah, everyone's in the hang of things. So, yeah, everyone's winding down. Couple more fundraisers this week. I got more information, last week I didn't provide you with a lot of information on that cancer awareness thing at the girls' basketball game that National Health Society was talking about, but I did talk to my teacher. It is, let's see, so they're selling $2, have you guys seen the Live Strong bracelets? Okay, so there's two gray bracelets with, it's for a nonprofit organization called Cure Starts Now, and one of the sophomores in North Andover High School was diagnosed in eighth grade with brain cancer. Her name is Shannon Irwin, and her sister also went through North Andover High School. She's in college right now. She also was diagnosed with brain cancer. So, Mrs. Pinkston, I think, is the head coach of the varsity team, and then they're joining on February 10th with Central High School, Central Catholic High School basketball team. There's an alumni from there, Lauren Hill, who also had brain cancer, and so they're all selling those bands, both JV freshmen and varsity players on North Andover and Central team, so it's a big fundraiser. Both teams are going to wear gray headbands and socks that night, and color gray is the color for brain cancer. And then we're trying to get the whole student section to also wear gray t-shirts, and that is what I talked about last week, with a little more information.
When's their game again?
February 10th. Yeah. Recently, over the intercom today, the announcement was made that the freshman and sophomore semi-formal is coming up, so they're going to be selling tickets. Hopefully, it's a little better than last year. I know theirs got canceled because there wasn't enough sales, but they're trying to promote it better this year, so they can have it. It will be taking place at Andover Country Club. And then, on with sports. Boys basketball takes on the number 12 team in the state tomorrow, Tooksbury, which will be a great game. Our team has made the state tournament already, and they still have seven more games left, I'm pretty sure. Boys hockey, which I'm on the team, we're 4-8-1. We tied Waltham last night. We need to win six of our next nine games, so it's a little rough patch, but, I mean, anything's possible. Girls gymnastics doing great, as I was told by Nicole. Tonight, as I said, is their senior night. Girls basketball also has a game against Tooksbury tomorrow night. They're doing great. And then Track has an MVC meet, both boys and girls, at Boston University tomorrow. And then, I don't know, any other sports? Yeah, that's all I have for tonight.
That's a full list?
Yeah.
So, thank you, very grateful.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
We are expecting more snow tonight, so let's pass along the easy does it in the parking lot, and we'll see if we can find spots for everybody.
Hopefully, they'll let you come to school with them.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Give the kids some Dunkin' Donuts.
Of course, yes, gotta give a shout-out to them. Our next item, number five, consent agenda, because of the two days off with the snow, we will actually take that next meeting, which, again, I think is the 25th or something, 26. So, jump on to the chair's report. Again, the timeline since our last meeting has been brief, but I really just want to give a massive shout-out to our DPW and our school custodians and staff, who made sure that the sidewalks and the safe routes for the students were clear in the parking lot, so that we were able to open up school this morning. And I think some of the buses were a little bit late, but I think they were being cautious, and I think that in June, they will appreciate having gone to school today, so...
Yes.
Yes. All right, Dr. Hutchinson?
I was going to say the same thing. It's not a, but I got to tell you, it's actually a pleasure to be able to make the calls I make with the DPW. I wrote to Bruce Thibodeau today, and I spoke with him, about how wonderful it is to connect with, I can basically connect with one foreman, typically it's John Lavin, that it's, and he's accurate, he's honest in his assessment, he's candid in his thoughts, and I typically, in what he says he's going to do, he does. I must admit, I drive through a number of towns to get here, and I also live in a town where they don't plow sidewalks, and I'm amazed at the number of sidewalks they plow in this town, and I'm amazed how good the conditions were comparatively, because it is comparatively. What you do with whatever, 25, 26 inches of snow is not an easy task. That being said, we never know what tomorrow morning's going to look like, but heads up, we'll know by 5:30, so...
Stay tuned.
And hopefully, if it is snowing, Nick's mother will let him drive again, so now we have school.
I was impressed, Dr. Hutchinson, in the same way you were, about how well our DPW crews did, and I was surprised when I drove through Andover this morning, it seemed like they hadn't done much work. I didn't realize they didn't have school, and it was like, when they called school, the DPW, I think, just stopped working. Lots of sidewalks were not taken care of, lots of roads weren't really...
They knew they had a lot of cleanup to do today, when they called school off.
Well, and the other thing that impresses me about any DPW, but ours is a good example, is when you get that much snow, it's snow removal, it's not just plowing. You have to get front end loaders and dump trucks, and they got to take it somewhere.
Especially in the downtown areas, and Andover, for instance, has a much larger downtown area than we do, and that makes it all the more difficult for them. We're more comparative to Boxford, Georgetown, and maybe North Reading, and Middleton, as far as snow was concerned, and snow removal, so those all had school, but the ones with the largest downtown or cities, a much more difficult task.
And outcountry slow buses are just because of narrow roads.
Yes, and they were now.
Safety and all that.
That's it, sir. It's been a short week.
And two days off, so it's even better. All right, so we'll now move on to the public hearing of the fiscal '16 budget. Is there, do you have comments on the, okay? Yes, please. You're going to open the hearing now? Oh, sorry, okay. Sorry, I was more off the agenda and not the, we need a motion, so hold on one second, sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chair, move to open the procedural hearing for FY '16 budget.
Second, all right.
Can I get a voice, what is that?
Voice, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we allow, open that, sorry about that. Yes, we do, yes. So, just, you have to state your name and address.
Yep, and this address you got. Jennifer Goldman, who's been here before, 112 Amberville Road in North Andover, parent, mom, and business owner. I have one question that has two parts. I read through the, I don't know, 70-plus pages, and my question is, in the funding, there seems to be no request for funding to lower the student-teacher ratio, and then reading back, there seems to be the mandate of 29-to-1 ratio, and I'm wondering, here's the two questions. One, why is there not a mandate to change the ratio to lower to an acceptable level for proper teaching? And two, why is there no request for funding to hire the staff, the school build-out development that needs to happen, to be at what I would consider to be other towns' more acceptable levels? That's not a comment, it's a question, so I'm not sure of the protocol.
Sure, sure, I'd be glad to, thanks. In the budget, we did request another sixth-grade teacher, which is in the budget, which lowers the ratio at the middle school and gets it more in line with what the experience will be for all middle schoolers, 6 through 8. It also makes it equivalent to what's typically in the fifth grade, the same ratios. Every year, we do not change the total number of teachers at elementary, but we will be moving somewhere around based on where the class size ends up with, and that's something we adjust as the springtime, and typically, we know that by the end of June. We did not, the school committee changed, and by the way, correct me if I'm wrong, changed some language regarding class size, simply because the language they had in before, we just couldn't do. We do not have enough space in our schools to do 22-to-1. We do not have enough space in our schools to do 22 to 1, um, in every classroom. Uh, and that's, that was the reason why, they said, well, it doesn't mean we're aiming for 29 to 1. It just means, and by the way, I can't say the last time we had 29 to 1 in elementary. I know we have 28 to 1 in a few classrooms. That's not our aim, but it's the realistic, uh, size that it may occur sometimes at any level, at, at any level. In the elementary, we do not have any space remaining in the schools to add classrooms. Uh, and that's why we shift around every year and try to keep the lowest we can get across board, typically trying to aim for a little bit lower in the lower, in the lower grades. Uh, sometimes that's doable, and sometimes it isn't. Uh, but right now, and, and right now, our, as, uh, Mr. Mealy has shown, as far as our population's concerned, our population's not in, not projected to increase. Yeah, enrollment, yeah, so.
May I ask a follow-up?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, so.
You're the only one.
Well, I, I know, but I also know she only gave it 10 minutes, guys, so I'm being respectful of the fact that you spent a ton of time here. My follow-up question is, just because there's no room, I do not understand changing the mandate. I would think you would keep a mandate of a lowest student-to-teacher ratio and continue to push up to the town level for more funding, which means the town, then, has to figure out a way to increase revenue. So, to me, who is somewhat of a warrior, I would think that you would want to keep the mandate lower and continue to push through funding and the request of funding to, and I completely understand. The buildings are maxed out, they're old, I get it, the technology's old, I understand all of that. I understand how it would cost the teachers and the parent teachers, but you have, I mean, I, I know you guys know these numbers, but I, I would just like to state them for everybody who's sitting at home, maybe even watching. When I see a town like a North Reading, who has a much lower ratio, a Hayrow, and Andover, and I could go on and on and on, looking at the Massachusetts report cards, I find it extremely difficult to hear a 29 to 1.
Again, I'll simply say 29 to 1 is not the goal.
I understand, but you know classes are at 24 and 25. You know, some classes don't have parent teachers. I come from parents that were teachers. There is no way a teacher can teach 24 children in this staying environment, and I think as a parent, for any of you that know, you know that is true. So again, my question is, will there ever be? Who, who, is it up to the parents to be loud enough to the school committee that's elected to say, "We want a change in the mandate," and then the school committee tries to work with the numbers to then push the town to raise funds? Is that the chain of command here?
Well, again, I would, I would simply say 29 to 1 is not the mandate. That is not a mandate.
The maximum, I'm sorry, the maximum, you're right.
That, that's the goal, not to exceed that.
Right.
All right. And I think that the, they, the school committee, after many years, simply changed the language because we could never
I understand.
attain what the class sizes were, the desired class sizes.
Of under 22 and
Of under 22, et cetera.
Totally get that.
At, at 3 to 5.
And again, I mean, uh, I, I, I think we have to be somewhat realistic, and, and by the way, I, I, I differ with you that a teacher cannot teach 24 students. Having been a teacher, I felt I could, I taught 24 students pretty well, and by the way, 28, so.
I'm sure you did. Not by choice.
Thank you.
Not by choice.
Well, any teacher would always want less.
Absolutely.
So, uh, but I think it's, I mean, based on, base, I, I get your point also, but based on the current reality of where population enrollment is projecting, to advocate for, "We are going to have 22 students or less in a classroom," it's not realistic, because we don't have space for 22 or less. Now, I understand, while we should push the town, uh, should we pu- should we, the question is, should we push the town to say, "We will stand for nothing less than 22 students or less," which means we'd have to bu- build schools?
Exactly.
And hire teachers.
Absolutely.
And redistrict.
And is that, and is that sustainable in North Andover?
You mean in terms of population? You think if there's a population
No, in terms of, in terms of funding, is that sustainable in North Andover?
Well, in the end, the parents will pay the taxes, right? So, okay, so I understand the chain, then, it is correct. It's the parents to the school committee, to the budget, to the town.
Yeah, and it is absolutely something that, you know, we're concerned with, right? So what are those numbers, you know, do we look at it, you know, Mr. Mealy presented, I don't know if it was last week, or, I'm getting my meetings confused, but last week, you know, what our projections were
Yep.
over the next, I wanna say, six?
Five years.
Five years, okay.
Do those include, like, the Berry Streets and, and so forth that are, may come, or how does that work? Is it actual projection, or including developments?
It's a real projection, um, but it's based on models that have proven successful within 1 to 2 percent.
Okay.
But basically, what you do is you see what the average transition is from each class each year, each grade. The most difficult one being trying to pin down kindergarten, but developments, you can, if you've got a large development coming, and you can factor that in on when it's going to come in,
Right.
but otherwise, you just
Right, but you can factor in the development if they come, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other thing, the other thing I would add too is, um, Mr. Mealy, also, when he was talking about our capital improvement program submission, we have put in the CIP for quite, quite a couple, quite a number of years now, classrooms, in acknowledgement of the need for more space.
Is that in this large document? Because I, it's beautiful, but it's hard to read through.
It's in our submission to the town, and there's a separate document called the Capital Improvement Plan, and you would see those in, what year, Jim?
Um, FY '17 or '18? I think we moved it back one.
So that, that's an acknowledgement on our part, that there is a need for more space.
Okay.
Now, we're having a discussion about how we might use that money and what that might include, but we have been aware of the, of the issue,
Yes.
and have been trying to get it on the radar.
Okay.
And that's been our best attempt so far.
And that's a separate from this process?
Correct, totally separate process.
This is the operating budget, and that is
It's, it's confusing, but the
But, but again, I mean
It's fine, I just think, you know, you're seeing an exodus to Andover and others, and you just have, you know, I wanna know that there's something being put in front of the town.
So, I mean, at town meeting, one of the things that we vote on is the Capital Improvement Plan, which has funded things like the Kittredge Gym, the fire station, et cetera, so
Yes, last year we did, okay.
The development of that, the planning of what that is, and then the actual building of it in a subsequent year. And I think it's '16 that we actually will scope out, where do we need that, the, the classroom space, and build it for the following year, which I know sounds far away, because it's 2015, and I
It does, and I know it takes five years to get a school shovel in.
And to build a school is even, you know, even bigger, and, you know, overrides and all that. I, I know we've seen that, um, in the news, you know, with Andover over the past, but it's, you know, really kind of figuring out where, where do we need to add those spaces, um, on to the different schools? And I could be wrong, but four years ago, we added on four classrooms, or three classrooms at the Kittredge. And an office space as well. The other thing, you know, just quickly, a little bit from some of our perspective, is, you know, just adding on one more teacher, let's say at the second-grade level, means at one cla- at one, you know, if you have 56 kids, you know, and then you divide that, then you've got kids at one school who are maybe at, you know, 18 in a classroom, but then other students in, in the same grade across town are at 24. So to evenly kind of spread that, again, involves the redistricting, and when we looked at some of that with Franklin, kindergarten in first grade? Or was it second?
First.
It was, it was the first graders and the kindergartners.
You know, one of the things that we heard was, "That's great, we should redistrict everybody but my kid." And, and there's a lot of considerations with that as well, because there are siblings who are already in the school, and they, they don't necessarily wanna move, you know, one child from one school to the other. So that neighborhood school and that neighborhood concept was very important to people as well, and, and a tremendous amount of parents said, "I'd rather be able to have my kids get on the bus or walk to school," as opposed to go to another school across town, again, where there's two less kids in a classroom.
Right, right.
But, but it is something with five additional classrooms, we're hoping, I think the projection is five in 2017.
And you keep talking as if you're talking elementary, but obviously, this trickles up to middle and high, so when you say five classrooms, are we talking about elementary only in the, in the CP plan?
We would actually, as part of that planning, figure out where the best place for that is.
Okay, so that's just an overall, we need to expand, and then you'll figure it out.
It could hypothetically be two at the middle school.
Right.
Now, where, logistically, those would go at the middle school would be something that, you know,
Absolutely.
we'd have to figure that out, and then, you know, where does it make sense to add on, based upon population, and potentially even moving some, some people
Yes.
from one school to another.
And that was sent to the town this year from you guys? Is this the first push?
It's a five-year plan that is updated
You can look online at the town website.
I'll find it, yes, thank you.
Yeah, online, it's already posted, the, the
Okay, all right, so that's
FY '16, CIP has already posted
Did you email earlier today?
Yep, I emailed for him and Stan. I didn't email all of you, I don't like that, so.
Okay, but I think I saw your email.
I saw.
You, he replied to you, so I, if I have that, um, capital improvement, and I can find it quickly tonight, I will shoot it to you tonight.
I'll find it, trust me.
All right, if you don't, then let us know.
I will let you know, you'll know.
Okay.
Stan already knows.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's all I wanted, I appreciate it, thanks for all the effort.
Thanks for coming, so we had somebody in our public.
Oh, my goodness. Watch on TV, though.
Yeah. Your stockings.
A, a little bit sometimes.
Okay.
All right, so I guess we're gonna go on to old business. Oh, sorry, move to close.
Move to close the public hearing on the FY '16 budget and second it?
All in favor of closing?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, I forgot we have to close. Okay, new business. Uh, continued discussion and approval of the recommended fiscal '16 budget.
Old business.
Did I say old business?
New business.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say that wrong?
I think you said new business.
I think I might have said new, but I meant old.
Number nine.
Okay, number nine. Uh, is there a motion?
Move to accept the FY '16 budget, I forget the number, right? That's the important part, yeah. Uh, $43,612,479, as presented by the admini- the school administration.
Second.
Second.
All right, we will move for discussion.
One, I, I just wanted to follow up on our discussion about technology, um, and I wanted to really ask, uh, Dr. Hutchinson and Mr. Mealy. We had a discussion about the buy-lease for the $75,000, right? And it, I'm, I think the more I thought about it after our last meeting, the more strongly I felt about leasing devices, so we could get going quickly, not defer, uh, the opportunity for students. And I, I wanted to just think a little bit about how, you know, once we pass the budget, it's sort of like a brown paper bag filled with $43 million. We give it to the administration, and they spend it. And that's kind of, they can do what they want, and priorities change and things change, we know that. Um, but I, I just wanted to make sure that, that we're, that I, or the school committee, if you all agree with that idea, are kind of on the same page, and we're sort of headed in that direction. Is that, is that, are we on, are we sort of headed in that same direction, the lease versus buy?
Um, I can tell you we're leaning that way. I can tell you that I'm, I'm not a big, I think I've said this before, not a big proponent of leasing, um, but in talking to Mike and looking at it, the fact that we could get all of the units that we think we need for the elementary level in the first year, and that he has assured me that we could have them up and running by the start of school, that that wouldn't actually be that difficult, um, I'm, I'm certainly leaning that way. I still need to do my due diligence in, in determining if it, it makes sense financially for us, but I can tell you that if it does make sense, then that's what we'll propose.
Can you remind us the numbers of purchasing versus leasing?
It would be 200 units for each year versus 600 right away. It's 20 carts, um, of 30 each, versus seven carts each year.
Sorry, I thought it was 100 and 300.
No, 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 that was just, uh, um, a model of the difference between leasing and purchasing. If we're talking about doing a Chromebooks, which are only 250 to 300, um, we're talking about a lot more units that we can get.
So with the lease, we'd get 600 units that we could distribute around our elementary schools and really have an impact, and get things really going.
Okay.
And, and the only difference in most of the, yeah, the only difference in this, uh, in this issue, in this matter, that's different from almost everything else we vote on, is this has a 150, you know, this has a $150,000 tail to it. We're essentially voting 225, right? I mean, we're voting a commitment of 225,000 over three years.
It becomes encumbered.
Over three years, but
Right, but I'm just saying, we're sort of voting future expenses in that respect, right?
Right, you're committing for the three years.
Yes.
Yep.
So, it's a little different from almost everything else we're judging, right? Because we're committing to something over some period of time, more than a year, effectively, so.
So what is the life expectancy of a Chromebook?
I think it's like any other unit, I think four years is probably reasonable. Yeah. Yeah.
I guess, um, I would be leaning towards the purchase. While I understand the number of units, um, going into the schools, I think my big concern that I voiced last week was, um, was providing the support and professional development needed to really make good use of those resources. I'm totally for integrating technology, but I also think that, I think that we need a clear vision as to what the goals are and the skills that are gonna be learned in the grade levels, which grade levels we're focusing on using them, and providing, to providing the, the resources that we need to support them, to utilize them, because my fear is that having all these additional carts doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna get used, and I think maybe if we start out with a smaller number, but we own them, so we're gonna have them longer, um, we can get them into the hands of the teachers who are really ready to use them, sort of, you know, the, the trailblazers, um, who are ready to, to try them out. And then, just from my own experience, it seems that then it sort of trickles into other classrooms, because one teacher sees them using it with, for a certain lesson or unit, then another teacher might learn what they're doing, and then the next year, we can purchase more and have more teachers who are on board. My fear is just having lots of carts, um, and some of them just not being used, and not because we don't have fabulous teachers who are energized and who want to do great things in our schools, but because we really don't have the support, we don't have any technology integration specialists listed. I don't think that we have any sort of positions funded for teachers who might be able to provide support, um, like our curriculum people who are in the district. So I think without those proper supports, I just don't think that more technology is better technology.
My, uh, counter to that would be, uh, I would worry about equity, right? Where do they go? And I said, is it such a small drop in the bucket that it really doesn't show any kind of effect? You know, you're, if you're down to 200, right, it's like one cart per school.
Right, but what's the effect you're looking for? I mean, the problem I'm having
What I'm, what I'm looking for is energizing teachers to wanna do this, to engaging teachers to be, to use their creativity, to start thinking about how to use technology. And to your point about, you don't wanna see unused carts, I think that's gonna be the last of our worries. We can move them between schools, they don't have to stay where they're not being used, they can be moved. The middle school would use all of those carts if we gave them to them. So there will no, there will be no unused carts. They may not be at the schools that are, they're initially assigned, if they're not being used there, but that's their prerogative, right?
But I think that's the problem. I think that the problem is, is that there shouldn't be unused carts anywhere, and they shouldn't be moving, because there should be a clear vision as to what they're gonna be used for, and I think that will develop with time, um, but, you know, if you look at some, some other schools, they might say, like
How will it develop with time? How, how will we do that over time?
Well, I think that there needs to be a spiraling of skills, just like you would have in any other content area, and I think if we want our kids to really be able to use it as an effective tool, then we want to know
Who does that? Who are the people that will do what you just said?
Well, I think the STEM coordinator, and maybe in coordination with Mike Grant, might do something like that, and with the technology subcommittee, but I think
So, Mr. Grant has told us they're putting together a, or whatever it was, Curriculum 4, teaching technology, K to 12, so they're doing that now, as we speak. So they're starting to look at just the pure technology part of using the devices for teaching technology. What else?
Well, I don't think that's what I heard.
That's exactly what he said last time.
Yes, and, and the other challenging part, and it's realistic, is that when you're starting, we have to understand that, for instance, this year's second graders have had minimal. Next year, they're in the third grade, the second graders would have much different experience than this year's second, so you have to adapt as you're putting in place this scope and sequence of skills. You have to understand that. You know, we're behind in technology. The longer we wait, all kids get further behind, and, and that's the challenge, and that's, I mean, personally, I would advocate for more upfront than less, uh, because as we're seeing at the middle school, where they brought in quite a bit of equipment, uh, they still don't have enough, and it's fully scheduled, and it's being integrated in many different meaningful ways, so.
I would say, Zor, you have a really good point, and I think it's, it's, it's kind of two different things, which are together. One being, I completely agree, like, what are those techno- digital technology literacies or skills that kids need to know and be able to do by the end of each grade? But then on the flip side, if you talk 20 carts, and you talk five elementary schools, for example, that's, that would be giving, if you just spread it out equally, it'd be four for each school, but if you took population into account, you know, some of the smaller schools might get two or three, um, where right now, they might only have where right now they might only have less than twenty-five working computers currently for the entire school. So, you know, some of the things that they're doing that way in terms of the teachers who are integrating some things, not necessarily those specific skills, but skills that they're learning, that they're using in terms of their teaching and learning. It, twenty seems like a lot, but it wouldn't be all that much on top of what we have because we really haven't had anything new since SFSF. So if you looked at twenty carts and you had three, added three to the sergeant, there's a lot of grades at the sergeant, you know, between three. That's the only way I look at it, but I see what you're saying, and that's critical to plan, to go forward with it. And, you know, in the perfect world, I'd say, oh, we'll have a digital technology curriculum. But, you know, we do need integrated technology facilitators and specialists to help with that because it can't be one more thing we add to the teacher's load on top of teaching ELA, mathematics, social studies, science. You know, we need someone to help bring that in. So it's, I see it from both ends, but I don't think it's as many as we think. It sounds like a lot upfront, but when you spread it out at the schools, it's really getting a few working computers for a couple, you know, one for K to two, one for three to five to be able to share. Just a thought. Can I provide a couple comments?
Absolutely, yeah.
So my take is lease or purchase, whatever gets us the most technology as soon as possible. That's the right route. And the technology curriculum should not be optional, right? We shouldn't say, because this teacher's not familiar or comfortable, that those students don't get the, don't get necessarily the opportunity to get to those technology curriculum skills that hopefully we'll be seeing before summer is out, what is expected at each grade level. Because I don't think that's negotiable. I don't think it should be negotiable. I think that is expected as part of the, you know, the student's abilities at grade level.
That's a good point.
And the third comment I was gonna make is, I don't believe that we have a fair understanding yet of, is it Chromebooks from K to twelve, or is there a different appliance for K to one, two, and Chromebooks three on to middle? And as a result, I would, I would hope that we do that assessment as part of the curriculum development so that when we actually spend the money, it's sustainable for what's appropriate grade level.
I'd just add that we do that assessment, and put your mind at ease somewhat in that if we decide that it's just, you cannot financially justify doing a lease right now, then we'll purchase. If we come forward to you, because we would have to, it requires approval of the school committee to enter into a lease. And if we felt that we could justify it, we would make the case and the school committee would decide.
So in order to get them for the start of school in September, are you anticipating we would do this in kind of the May-June timeframe? I'm just trying to figure out when we lock that in.
When will we buy it? After the meeting?
Yeah, it worked. I mean, we had town meeting, so we had it available and we had it all set up to go. And, you know, June, we were getting ready. And as soon as school is out, the units can show up and get put in place.
The other factor, I want to reiterate here too, and it's something that Mr. Grant spoke to, which is, because we're using different technology now, it makes us a much, much less of a problem. Five years ago, or ten years ago even, this was much more complicated because the technology was much more complicated. We had PCs, but they had, you know, hosted operating systems, they had software you had to load. They had all kinds of really onerous tasks that you had to have a staff to do. If that were the case, we could not buy six hundred computers and put them into our schools. It would be impossible. It would be physically impossible. We couldn't do it using the technology we had even probably five years ago. The technology that we now have allows them to do that, and you can see the results from the fact that they were able to introduce two hundred more, more than two hundred computers over the summer with almost no glitches.
True.
So, you know, I think there's, there are things that have changed that make this more practical. It doesn't address all the issues, and the one issue we still need to address is the actual teach and learn issue. You know, the real curriculum issue, you know, where the rubber meets the road. And that's something we'll have to get to at some point, but I don't think slow-rolling the technology will help us do that. As a matter of fact, I think the opposite will be true. If we get the technology and we start using it, we'll find out exactly what we need in terms of instructional technology specialists or whatever, whatever it is. We'll know because we'll have teachers saying, I need people to help me do this, and we'll know exactly what the requirement is, not a hypothetical requirement. So that's my, my take on that.
Mr. Mealy, the numbers that we have here, and I know once we kind of finalize some stuff, I mean, that, that number may fluctuate a little bit, but does that include insurance as well for the devices?
That's the estimate that Mike puts together as the total cost to the district.
Insurance breakage, theft, any of that? I mean, if we have a leased computer, at the end of three years, we have to give it back, but if.
No, no, this is leased to own.
Leased to own.
Oh, leased to own?
Mm-hmm.
They're just charging us to amortize it.
Yeah, it's a time payment.
It's like you're getting when you're finding it.
It's like a car, it's like a car loan.
So when I, I must have missed the leased to own option in there. Okay.
We never said it. We just assumed it.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, that one's in your sale, right? All right. I just wanted, and does the company that we're getting them from, do they provide any professional development for the staff? Or is that real flaw?
I can't, I can't say no. I mean, they may as a value-added, but that would be at an additional cost. I mean, we're buying the units from the company.
Just the units.
I wouldn't doubt it, actually, because Mike does, we do our own PD on this.
I think we'd have to look at our experience at the middle school. The technology is straightforward enough. You know, it's a browser.
Yeah.
So pretty much everybody, even, even young students are pretty familiar with that. There is some necessity probably to get some training on Google Drive, but I'm sure that's not the vendor of the hardware. So, you know, we're still looking at other kind of PD that may or may not be required, but I don't think it's the people.
Okay, I just didn't know, I mean, if somehow they came with, you know, a day that.
Yeah, in the old days, when it was a complicated device, you know, you had to know how to back things up and get the hard disk. None of that. They don't have any of that. Yeah, they don't have hard drives.
All right, Mr. Theresa?
Two points. First of all, I share Stan and Brian's goal, getting any computers as quick as possible into people's hands, no question about it. But I kind of hear what Zor is saying too, and as a new member, I'd like a little more clarification on the timeframe of you getting these computers and getting teachers trained to use them so they don't sit idly. You said after town meeting, we, tell me, just why.
We wouldn't be able to get them until July one.
Until July one, and Mr. Grant feels like that's enough time with the proper, to get the teachers trained to use them?
Well, it's not the train. What Mike's talking about is having them ready to go. The carts are ready so that a teacher, come September one, or whatever our first day is, can get the cart, bring it to class and use it.
Excuse me, but Brian brought up a point, and I don't know how much there's truth to that point, but about teachers being comfortably using this. Do we have a problem with some teachers not being able to jump right in there September first with that? Because if that's the case, I think Zor's point's well taken.
I'm saying you have various levels of comfort. Last year, for instance, when the new computers came in for the staff, Mike put together a schedule that spanned throughout the summer. And every teacher came in and did an hour PD with part of the IT staff to acquaint them with the new device, because some of them had the new device. Offered other sessions above and beyond that, because it has to be very differentiated for what the, based on the skills of what they have right now, so. And they were very responsive. The teachers were very, very appreciative of the flexibility that they offered as well as, and sometimes one-on-one sessions that they could come in and follow up on. So they're very much in tune with what do the teachers need. But there's a lot of teachers, there's some teachers that just give it to them and they'd go to town right away. There's other teachers that would need a little more support.
Now, let me make sure I understand this right. The, well, I, just let me, I want to make sure I've got this right. The teachers, our school district is now using Google Drive and Google Docs.
Yes.
As its platform. So apart from the device they're using, teachers are now all familiar with Google Drive. You know, the word processing, but whatever they need to use. So there's no, there will be no additional training required for that, right?
Is that accurate?
What I wanted to say is not only what Hutch said is accurate about the training for teachers in the summer, but last fall, we incorporated into our, some of our PD time. We had Google for beginners, like walking, crawling, jogging, sprinting. You know, we had different sessions that Mike's staff worked with us to train teachers at all different levels. And then in addition, for some of the faculty PD time last year, they went and trained entire schools just on Google Apps and Google Docs, email, all that. I think to Zor's point is beyond the computer training for teachers because they're all gonna, all the teachers are gonna know how to use Google and the computers. That's not gonna be a problem. I think what she's saying is down, you know, as we move down the road, how do we get to integrate this into the teaching and learning aspect?
I think that's, that's the key issue. There's nothing on our learning management system, if we had a learning management system, that they can reach out, pick up a lesson plan, that says, this is how we're gonna integrate computers in this, in the subject.
But Mr. Grant came and said.
I agree. I understand.
He's moving in that direction.
I understand, but my point is, we can't start the car down the road unless there's a guarantee that someone's gonna be paving in front of us. So that's kind of what I'm looking for here, is the guarantee that we're gonna have the curriculum in place, we're gonna have an appropriate end user assessment. I'd love to hear about the BYOD pilot at the high school, what the criteria for that is. And I'd like to be sure that we view this as, this is a non-negotiable. We're making this investment. It's, these skills that we're insisting on that at our grade, grade level have to be there.
Mr. Superintendent, I mean, what's the, what's the contract say? Do all teachers need to be?
Oh, no, I, I like, actually, I like Brian, I like Brian phrasing there because if these are the standards for technology, they are non-negotiable standards.
They have to be implemented.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
And that's where.
They're like even cast.
What I'm trying to say is, what I would really strongly encourage be put together is a spiraling of skills. If we really wanna have digital citizens who know how to use that laptop, or whatever it might be, in this case, a Chromebook, if that's the route we go, know how to use that for more than, than playing some games and doing a drop-in type thing. I wanna know that by the end of whatever grade, X grade, that, that children are gonna know how to, you know, to go into Google Docs and do whatever. They're gonna know how to type. They're gonna know how to use capitalization, shift, all these things, which I think you might say is, is normal, but that's not necessarily, not all kids are on a level playing field because we don't have that curriculum. And so what I would love to see, as a teacher, I would love to know that my students, like when I was teaching social studies, I could say, language arts teachers, let me look at what your, what skills you're working on, what kids are practicing, what they have, their proficiency at, and what they've mastered, because I'm gonna create my writing assignments for social studies based on what I know they can actually do. And I'm not gonna give them assignments that they can't do because they haven't gotten to it yet or because I haven't taught them proper research skills or ELA. And so my point is, as teachers, I think it's really important for A, for them to know what skills to integrate, know how to do that, and also so that as we go through the grade levels, the kids all have similar skills so that projects can be created to maximize those skills that can be integrated. That's my point. It's not about just using Google Docs to turn the machine on.
Absolutely agree.
I think Mr. Mealy gave us the opening, which is, so we vote the budget, and it has seventy-five thousand dollars in it. If, if it's a lease thing, they'll have to come back and ask us again, and at that point, we can ask for more information. We can ask to see Mr. Grant's plan for technology. We can ask to see his plan for using Google Plus for, you know, an LMS, a rudimentary LMS to share. You know, we can ask for those things prior to approving that lease. You know, it's a second opportunity to do that. But, you know, I would hope that we would all agree that we need to spend money on technology. We're just debating buy versus lease, and, you know, to the point, since it's a time payment plan, we're, we're buying them anyway.
Sure.
So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so anyway. So, you know, but, but, you know, all points well taken. All points well taken, you know? And, you know, it's kind of pressure from both sides. Get the stuff, and now let's make it work, right?
And I'm totally for improving the technology resources in our district. I just wanna, just wanna strongly encourage that we do in a way so that everyone's on board of the same plan.
Well, and the part that I think that has been amazing to me is, I didn't believe, I honestly didn't believe in my heart of hearts, that Mike and his group would be able to get the whole infrastructure up and running as well as they have. That was the one where I thought we'd have time to just do this sort of stuff and think about it. They got everything running and it really works everywhere, elementary schools too. So now we're in a position where we have the stuff, we have the infrastructure, we just don't have any ability to use it. So, you know, shame on us if we don't give people.
We have some ability.
We have some, yeah.
It's limited.
We need to, we need to expand that fast.
And we gotta get that paving machine right in front of the car.
And honestly, just to compliment Mr. Grant for a minute, I mean, he started in that position in January of last year.
A year ago.
So, you know, I mean.
I mean, it's been like dramatic.
To literally take that and hit the summer running in that way, I think was exactly what we needed.
But I mean, the amount of progress that they made in a short time is unbelievable.
Yep, but I do one hundred percent agree with Mrs. Warren. You know, I, I think, you know, we need the computers, we need the technology. When we get to the point of buy versus lease and we understand exactly what the number is that we're gonna be purchasing, I think I'm gonna need to see, assuming that I'm here, what that's gonna look like from an implementation and a kind of teaching assistance tool. I mean, it's not, it's not just throwing them into the room.
The structure for the devices. I mean, how are they gonna be used and what's gonna be the objective? You know, what is the learning objective of these devices? I mean, apart from what, you know, teachers are using for their regular classes.
Maybe there's two pieces. I think there's the, the technology skills piece, and then there's the integration piece. You know, and I think those are both important.
Yep.
New topic?
You're asking or begging?
This has been a very healthy discussion on, on a seventy-five thousand dollar investment, so that's all good. The other thing that, and I, we had a long conversation about how the improvement plan and budgeting cycles are really at a phase. So what I'm, what I'm gonna be looking for moving forward is these robust performance indicators to ensure ourselves, rather than waiting until the end of the budget, that we're making progress to a performance-based initiatives. And I know that's going to be an ongoing thing. Hopefully, we're gonna be starting this summer to develop those. So, you know, in September, we at least have some base information that we're looking for that are gonna be systematically collected. So we kind of get the budgeting and programming in better, better synchronization. So that'd be another thing that I think with this budget and with the way that we've gone about budgeting, I'm hoping that, you know, by September, we'll have a good feel for what our short-term, intermediate-term, and long-term KPIs will be related to the program investments.
So I can just tell you that, you know, Hutch has committed the leadership team agenda to producing that.
We have a three-hour workshop next Tuesday to continue the work in that.
Great. So the one thing that I was just gonna add is, you know, obviously, Dr. Price will be here, you know, beginning in July. So I don't know if we wanna somewhat keep a running list of things. And I.
Part of the entry plan, right?
Right, I know that that's, but that should be part of the entry plan that we have out there and the expectations. Just, I mean, you know, Mr. Gross bringing up, you know, how we wanna see the benchmarks and kind of where they are and, you know, we can't necessarily look at the end of the year because we're in the middle of it now and trying to figure out where we are. So how do we get those incremental steps reported back to us? Not that they're not happening today, but just, you know, at a, at a different level.
Well, it's for us to, it's kind of for us, the five of us to remember, whoever the five of us end up being, the five people sitting here to remember, we have that opportunity when we start the superintendent evaluation process in the fall, right? So we set the baseline, we talk about goals and objectives for this, you know, all of that. So at that time, we can start bringing out the points of things we wanna see, right?
My point is just, we need to make sure that we're listing and documenting them so that come September, we don't go, what was that? You know, unless Bev took great notes, then.
She does. She creates checklists.
She's probably watching us at home.
Yeah, yeah. Other questions?
I just was wondering if any of the rest of you had, you know, we had like six, five, really five items that were the new things, right, not the, the normal stuff. Sixth-grade teacher, top program, some special education augmentation, textbooks basically, and a little more guidance support at the high school and technology, and we beat technology to death pretty much. I personally don't have any particular thoughts on those. They all seem useful and good. You know, does anybody else have any thoughts on those other four items about their advisability? Sixth-grade teacher, top program, some additional special ed support, and textbooks and a part-time, a little more FTE, fractional FTE addition at the high school for guidance. Those are the other four items beyond technology.
I'd like to squeeze out a fifty-four thousand for a technology integration specialist. I just, I think with the new investments, I just, I think it's unfortunate that we don't, I mean, and I know the money is what the money is, but I think that's the one area where I think it, to me, it'd be a nice coupling to have those two coming in together.
You know, my recollection from, you know, the big, the big list, the next item on the list, if we got more money, would be an ITS person. Is that true, Mr. Mealy?
No, it's the pilot that's next.
Yeah.
It's one-to-one pilot.
The pilot's next.
Oh, the what?
One-to-one pilot in the eighth and ninth grade, BYOD.
Okay.
That was for twenty thousand, which was ripe lobeine, and then there was a fifty-four thousand for the instructional technologies.
But just because they're presented in this order doesn't mean. But just because they're presented in this order doesn't mean.
But I know, and I think to that point too, as we move along, once, you know, there's so much work that goes on after the budget's approved. And some things happen, some things change. If for any reason, that amount of money became available, and, and we wanted to have another position, we'd be coming back to you for the position, but we'd have to identify where the money was coming from, so.
So I, I hear what you're saying. One concern I have is, in prior years, there were some needs to shuffle the budget, and the budget was, let me put it this way, the investments were not necessarily in the order in which we had presented here. And for me, that was a surprise. So, you know, I think we had a conversation about, is this the absolute priority list? So if monies do become available, this is the next thing we're gonna tackle. And we haven't spent any time on that in terms of prioritizing beyond where the line is. And I would just be cautious that if there is a need to kinda shuffle things, or if there is a shortfall or a surplus, I would hope that you'd be coming back to the board to have that dialogue about what is the next important priority here. Because I don't believe, as, as Zora's indicated, I don't believe that these, these might be in the same priority order that we all agree.
Yeah, what we, what we were, I mean, based, based on, as you see the changes there, our, our priorities are technology and reading, beyond what we presented now. I mean, it pretty much clusters in that manner. And especially when we want to, if we wanna add personnel, we have to come back to you anyways.
Yep.
So that would be the time where we'd have the discussion, yeah. And I, and I would say, we would take down a consideration if all of a sudden what was, was it $12,000 for the BYOD?
Eight, I'm sorry, 20, 20,000.
20, okay. So, I mean, we'd, in, in a $43 million budget, that's not much. But if we were going to, if we were just gonna, we're gonna do that and forget even thinking about a technology integration specialist, I said, we, we would come back and have that conversation.
That's great, and, you know, I think one of the things that we talked about is, you know, do we really need to invest in a van for top? Are there other mechanisms to get that? If we found one, it would be nice to be able to reinvest that elsewhere.
Yes, yeah.
So the question is, what's the next thing to invest in? So it's not necessarily a reduction or a hiring, it's the priorities that we have to, we need to discuss.
My big, my biggest thought and risk that I see with it is the special education funding coming in from town hall, or town meeting.
We had a discussion on that with the town manager about that today.
Okay.
Jim, do you want us to tell you?
That'd be great, this might be the time.
We brought it up because we thought it might come up tonight. And really, the, I mean, he spoke right away to, everybody we have talked to has said, has been very positively supporting this. And anytime anything with that level of support has gone to town meeting for a vote, it's always won overwhelmingly. There's always exceptions, we know that. But let's just say the scenario, if it didn't happen, the only difference in our budget would be, we typically would, would have put in $150,000 into our budget, is that correct, Jim?
The town manager has in the past couple of years.
Yeah, and we have in our own.
Right.
Right.
To create a contingency.
It's a $750,000 hole, right? It's a $120,000 gap.
But we know that.
What's that?
We're negative this year, right, so far?
We are going to have to utilize, we kind of have put in our pocket the $325,000. It was $175,000, $150,000 in the last two years that the town manager had given to us, but we didn't have to use it. So we had that in our pocket coming in, and we had another $150,000 that we had included in the budget. So we were right around $500,000 to start the year. We've already, yeah, we've already used all that.
Right, but where, so we've used it?
Yep.
And where are we?
We are, right now, we're projecting to, with those funds, break even, but things continue.
Okay, so we're at a break even at this moment?
So it could be that, yeah, we're even right now.
But it's not unusual where we are.
Yep.
Well, I guess my point is, it's not unusual, but we've, we've exceeded our contingency budgeting.
For years?
Five years in a row? Six years in a row?
I, I would say longer than that. Anytime, for as long as I've been here.
We exceeded because we didn't have any contingency. And, and so the last two years prior to this year, we did not exceed our contingency because we were able to pocket the $175,000, $150,000.
Reserve the reserve.
Right, we were able to, to not tap into it. But yeah, it, it's, it's been something that we've been talking about, and this, in my opinion, is the best solution that we could come up with. I understand the concern if it didn't pass, but as Hutch said, every time something has gone forward with school committee, select, board of selectmen, and FinCom support that the town manager is proposing, it's passed. And, and if it didn't, it would be just like all the previous years, where we went in with what we know we need, and then we'd have to make adjustments if unanticipated things happened.
And have we hit the threshold for this current year for emergency circuit breaker?
Yeah, they just came out this morning. I confirmed our intent to apply for extraordinary relief, is what it's called, for circuit breaker.
Thank you.
Yep, so they're just starting that process now.
To your, to your concern, Mr. McDevitt, in the past, and I defer to Mr. Terese because he's been here for probably more town, more town meetings than I have, there was always the push to take money that will be used for this purpose, free cash, and put it in the stabilization, the town stabilization fund, because it was always underfunded. It has now gotten to a level where the town manager has, has said, we've reached the level that the board of selectmen have said they wanna have for the stabilization fund, 5%. And it's, there's no benefit in putting more money in the stabilization beyond that level. That's the one that gets us the bond ratings and all that sort of stuff. So in the past, there was some push to not use money for things like this, but to always put it in the town stabilization fund. That's now, we're okay with that. So this gives him the opportunity to take, take some of this free cash and put it into other sorts of stabilization funds, and that takes the pressure, the sort of the voting pressure off from like, no, we don't wanna do that, we wanna put it in the other fund. There, there's no plan for them, the board of selectmen and the town manager, to put more money in the town stabilization fund. They've put in what they said they wanted to put in, 5%, and they're done. You know, that's up to that level. And they, and we, I, I can't recall the last time we ever used that. I don't recall ever voting money out of that stabilization fund for any reason, so it's just been sitting there for a long time.
And I, I have to repeat, the night we were there, when he presented this idea to the board of selectmen, it was, it was overwhelmingly supported. There's no hemming and hawing, every single person spoke to how necessary that would be.
Great. So prepare for the worst and hope for the best. What would our operational assumption be? We won't hire the 3.3 FTEs, and everything above the green list is now our special ed contingency? Or do we shuffle the deck and figure out what to do from there?
I would.
I would, I would say that we don't have to, whenever we start talking about, and what you're talking about though, and people that are not on board yet, you know, and they wouldn't be on board until after town meeting anyway. So that decision could be made at that time if that happened, that, all right, we're not gonna hire the 3.3, that's this amount of money, and this is what we're going into the year with as our contingency, since we didn't get that.
And anything we do has to be done before, if it involves staffing, has to be done before June 15th.
Yeah.
We have a window there.
So we'll know what will happen, what will have happened by then, so we'll know what we need to react to, yes.
Cause we can post an interview, and then be ready to appoint after town meeting.
Mr. Terese? So, Mrs. Warren?
Oh, so back to the technology, sort of. I still encourage the administration to think about utilizing the position that's shared by the elementary schools and sort of morphing it into a media specialist, library media specialist, whatever.
We've had those discussions.
Okay.
You know, and actually, coincidentally, we had that discussion prior to it being brought up at the last meeting.
You should hear some of the things we discussed. Really out-there ideas, because we're just trying to think of all possibilities.
I appreciate that.
We don't bring those all to the table.
Sarah?
I'm done. I'm done.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were done.
No. I had a question last time about, I think it was in the high school budget, and someone was gonna get back to me about just the numbers.
Was it a decrease?
Yeah, there's a decrease and an increase, and one decrease and one increase in the other, so I was curious about that.
I think that was the department head's. Oh, I don't remember.
If there was curriculum support connected to high school?
I think it was high school.
Over the past two years, we reduced the department chairs at the high school. We eliminated them. At one point in time, it was about a quarter of a million dollars, and we've eliminated those over the past two years.
Okay, so I don't know if that's, it's in the curriculum and professional development budget?
That's where it would be.
Okay, there was salaries, professional went.
Yep, that's where it would be.
From 142 to 15, and then training and education, 51 to 159, is that, that's what that is, the department heads?
Basically, though, what happened was those salaries got taken out of those line items, which were for curriculum leadership, and moved into the regular salary lines of the teachers.
Yep.
I'm not sure there's additional conversation. So entertain a motion? Sorry, sorry, we have a motion, sorry. So hearing no further discussion, I will call a vote, all in favor of the fiscal year 16. All right, okay, I will do a. All right, I will do a $43 million roll call vote for the approval of the fiscal year 16 school budget as presented totaling $43,612,479. We'll start there, Mr. Terese.
Aye.
Mrs. Warren?
Aye.
Mr. Limper?
Aye.
Mr. Gross?
Aye.
And myself, I'm a yes. So we are five to nothing in favor of the budget.
Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to Dr. Hutchinson on completing his last budget.
Yeah, it's fun.
And for the administration team, Mr. Gilligan and Mr. Mealy, on your assistance, as well as our principals and all the hard work that went into it for the rest of the office.
Yes, thank you.
All right, jumping down, sorry. We have already heard from the principal of the high school, Dr. Scuzzarella, regarding the DECA overnight trip. And so we now move on to 10B, which is the Programs of Studies, which was sent under, at the same time, but a different attachment, so.
There's nothing to approve, this is a information.
No, it's nothing you approve, it's just information.
So I guess two comments, and I know Dr. Scuzzarella had indicated that there was a reduction in the curriculum. I'd like to know what those were, if they were non-popular, just out of curiosity, what, what were those classes that were reduced?
The exact one, Jim, because she did indicate these are, basically, we did it off for the last few years, so, but you, specifically what they were.
I'm just curious, what has been reduced? And then I would, I would encourage the leadership team at the high school level to look at enhancing the 21st century skills in the area of computer programming, you know, HTML technologies, things of that nature, that our surrounding schools seem to have in their curriculum and could seem to support. And wonder if this is an opportunity that we may launch forward into, into our technology infrastructure and investment by offering this as part of our curriculum development.
Yep.
There's lots of innovative electives in other areas, not so much in that area. Interesting, good point.
I'm just gonna make a quick comment. I'm always impressed by the selection of the classes that are available to the students at the high school. And I'm not there yet, although I will be in a couple of years, but I always look for the, you know, kind of how the classes get structured, and how you kind of move from one, one area to the next, and I, I always look at that. And I, I think, I don't know how much wordsmithing may have been done on it, but I feel like it is clearer now in terms of what the selection process is and how that kinda runs through. So I don't know exactly who has made all of the maintenance of this document, but I certainly appreciate it, and I think it's a great resource for our parents, and especially the incoming freshman class. All right. All right, so we will move on to public comment.
Oh, can we still, new business?
Oh, sorry.
In terms of keeping the list, I think last time, we had asked about CREST, and just, I can't remember who asked, but about what programs we're utilizing there, and future plans, that type of thing. So we may not be ready for that today, but maybe we can get some of that information for the next time we meet in February. Thank you.
Have we heard anything more on the high school?
I met with them today. The private high school?
The private high school, sorry, thank.
I met with them today. We went over what they had, what they had given me for a program of studies. I gave some suggestions to them, gave them some examples, and they're gonna rework it a bit and send it back to me. And then I said at a certain point in time, relative, I said, our next meeting is the end of February, that we could bring it forth when I, when I think it's acceptable.
Okay.
Yeah, because the purpose of the school committee is simply saying, is this program of studies, is this a worthy program of studies to present for a high school diploma? Which means, are they following what the state's asking them to do? So, and that's the only thing that they asked the, the, the school committee to do. It's not approving their school where it is, any of that, it's simply about the program of studies, so.
Okay.
Will their presentation include what their governance, administration might look like?
They will, they, but that's not something you approve, though.
Okay, I'm just curious.
So they, they do have that, and I, my suggestion was keep it simple, don't get it too complicated, but they, they are willing to come and talk about their basic structure, and it's, it sounds pretty interesting, actually.
Okay, great.
Always good to have another alternative. All right, public comment? No, one and done?
All done.
All right. Any public comment from the committee? Mrs. Warren?
I don't think so.
Mr. Limper?
We had a wonderful robotics tournament this past Sunday. Thirty-seven teams from all over New England. One of our teams fortunately got, it's a complicated way that they do this, but the bottom line is, one of our teams is going forward to the regionals, which is great. They were very, very happy about that, very well-run, many, many wonderful volunteers who helped out. We had the whole NAMA crew helping us. They have a, they should subcontract, activity support for that. And it was just great. Every year, it gets better and better, as you probably saw, we got some good publicity in the paper, we got a front-page article, Above the Fold, which is excellent, and I'm sure we'll get some follow-up articles now. So that's, that's starting to, I think, really take hold now. And I think our students, I liken it to the wrestling program, you know. Programs build up a momentum, and then students know, realize it's available, and they wanna join. So I think we're getting to that point now with robotics and the tech ed, part of our curriculum at the high school. Students wanna do it, right? They know it's good and fun, and everybody's having a great time, so. It's, it's really a wonderful activity, and I'm very proud of it, so.
Mr. Grant?
Just a quick shout-out, this is to the young drivers out there. It snowed, it's gonna continue to snow. The snowbanks are tall, and there may not be sidewalks, so please take it easy out there. Expect people in the roads, walking where there are no sidewalks, and let's have a safe, safe remaining of the winter.
And the only thing that I have, which I think you guys all know, but the public may not, I am up for reelection this coming March, and I have pulled papers from the town clerk, and will be submitting those probably tomorrow or Monday to run for reelection. So it will, I think, be in the paper, I've gotten a couple of calls from a couple of the newspapers, so I'm gonna publicly, I guess, cut them off at the pass. So, sorry, guys.
Feel a bit of thunder, right?
Exactly, exactly. All right. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Gross, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.